I'm Carissa Newbert. I'm the provider at the Sydney School-based Health Center, but I also represent Sydney EMS on the Board of Directors. And tonight, we're here to tell you a story about a wonderful young lady, Kelsey Cowan. She's a Sydney high schooler in 10th grade. And a few months back, she displayed incredible bravery at the scene of an accident where Sydney EMS was rendering care. We would love to shout this story from the rooftops and proclaim it to everyone who could listen. But we also need to be sensitive to the needs of the family that was in crisis that night. So we're here tonight to congratulate you on your bravery. You've made me, your parents, your school, and your community proud. So Angie, I'd like you to tell the story.
On October 24th, we were dispatched to a multiple-car accident with serious personal injury. Upon getting there, it was complete and utter chaos. As is being the first unit on scene, it usually is. Somebody told me that there were children that had been removed from a vehicle, as well as two parents still trapped in the vehicle that the kids were removed from. One provider went to that car, and I went to where the children were, where I found Kelsey with three very young children, three, five, and seven years old, sitting in the vehicle with her, smiling, actually. Kelsey's smile took those children from complete panic to the calmness that we needed on scene for those children. None of the three children ended up with severe injuries, thank God. Both adults in the vehicle were severely injured and intubated before they left the scene. But with Kelsey's help of taking the children over to the ambulance so that they could not see their parents any longer, she was able to keep the kids calm enough. The seven-year-old gave me all of the information I needed on who mom was, what their birthdays were, what phone numbers were, who dad was, what these children were allergic to, what medications they took. Kelsey, without your help, that accident would not have gone the way that it did. My job is hard enough. You made my job look easy that night. You really did. And your parents should be very proud of you. I'm very proud of you, and I can't thank you enough. So on behalf of myself and Sydney EMS, thank you.
Here's my sweatshirt for you. Talking of my appreciation.
You're an honorary Sydney EMS member.
Again, in partnership with Sydney EMS and Sydney Fire, Sydney Central School District wants to present you with a certificate of citizenship for your heroic efforts that evening brought too. So congratulations.
Thank you so much, Kelsey. That's very brave of you. And I'm sure that family is much better off because you were there. So thank you. Me is all very proud. All right. Next, we have the cross-age mentoring program presentation. Okay. I was just... That is one callback to follow. All right. Do we have a clicker?
No, I was not going to... Do we have a clicker? Oh, wait. Oh.
How are you doing?
Yeah.
How have you been doing?
Not bad. I took thirty clients.
When's that? When's that?
It's Saturday. Looking forward to the...
You feeling good about it?
Yeah.
Who else has a chance?
It's me, I guess. Keegan was supposed to go.
Who?
Keegan.
All right, well, good luck.
Thank you.
It's not the serve of the day. I want to make sure we got a photo.
No, thank you.
Kelsey routine. So awesome efforts by that. So I just want to thank Sydney EMS and Sydney Fire for making the recommendation to recognize Kelsey here at the board meeting spot too. So awesome for that quick partnership. So as we talked about earlier this year, is in the February board meeting, we present the peer tutoring model that Sam Burris, elementary counselor, and Jody Gravlin, 10-12 counselor, have been working diligently to develop. So as part of the social and emotional support for kids, part of the focus on student supports, I will turn that over now to Ms. Gravlin and Ms. Burris for the peer tutoring program.
Okay, thank you. That was literally what I was just trying to say, to open up. So thank you for leading right into that. So anyway, for the peer tutoring program, basically, right now, we currently have seven peer tutors that are paid by the district. They have to be board-approved. They have to fill out their working papers and the payroll paperwork. And this year, we added an extra step where they are interviewed by our assistant principal, Ms. Rogan. So the tutors are juniors and seniors who are identified as having a 90 or better grade cumulative grade point average. And then, within the subject areas in which they are going to tutor, they have to achieve mastery within that subject area. So mastery of 85 or better, both in the course and the Regents' exam for the years that we've held those Regents' exams. They can also tutor in the courses in which they are currently enrolled, as long as they're maintaining at least a mastery status within that course. For accountability, those students, the tutors fill out documentation after each tutoring session as to what they accomplished. So the students being tutored, they are based on recommendations from teachers, whether the administrators, parents can refer their students, counselors can refer students to be tutored, or even they can do a self-referral. If they're struggling academically, they seek me out. That could be one intervention that we could provide for those students. So then, what we try to do is match the tutor with the student being tutored. A lot of times, based on their personalities to make a good match, to make sure that they'll click during those sessions. But most of the time, it boils down to common schedules and when they can meet, when both students are available. So how do we make this happen? Basically, to gain interest, I sent an email to all juniors and seniors who had a 90-plus grade point average, just to try to gain that interest. And when those students had expressed interest, then I met with them to discuss what the program was about, more details, some expectations, some strategies that they could try to implement, such as reaching out to the teachers of the students that they were tutoring. And then, I let Mrs. Rogan know when it was time for the interview. I also met with the students who had been referred for this peer tutoring program to get them on board, review expectations such as being prepared for tutoring sessions, making sure that they're responsible for showing up each time for their tutoring sessions. And then, tutors meet with the students who are being tutored approximately two to five days a week. It really depends on the area of need, the level of need for the student who's being tutored and in the subject areas in which they're tutored. So then, we prioritize... We also prioritize based on Regents' level courses. The tutoring takes place during the students' free periods, whether it be study hall, or advisory, lunch, or after-school. And the tutoring takes place during... Sorry, at the main office conference room. So why? What are the benefits of this type of program? Research shows us that peer tutoring programs help to improve academic achievement, retention, because they're practicing these specific skills. It gives them a deeper understanding of the topic, and it also forms stronger peer relationships, but not only for the student being tutored, but for the tutor as well. And it just adds an extra level. It's like a tier-three intervention that adds an extra layer of student support to high school students who are struggling with Regents' level courses.
Beautiful. So up next is a kind of similar program. It's called Partners in Pride. It is a cross-age mentoring program, which simply means that we're taking high school students and letting them... We're allowing them to spend time with our little elementary loves to foster and develop some of those relationships. And we've been doing it for about a month so far. It's going super, so we're really pleased about that. And the goal is to provide structured and unstructured activities for students to really connect and develop relationships. Some of the benefits, much like what Jody was just saying, looking at school connectedness, attendance, academic gains, behavioral improvements, and really, social skills. And we connected this to two of our district's focus areas. The first would be student supports. We're using this as a tier-two intervention, and we are just adding additional layer of support for our students. So we've gone through and identified to those who just need a little extra love, and we even matched them with high school students who have time in their schedule to support them in class, working in the hallways in class, with me, doing all sorts of fun stuff. The other focus area that we connected this to was culture, climate, and positivity. I'm all about warrior pride. I'm all about school connectedness. And this easily connects. We call it Partners in Pride. In our training, we went over the pride expectations for high school students coming over to elementary school, what was appropriate and inappropriate interactions, and how to demonstrate and embody pride in all that they do. So it's really designed to help students feel connected to other kids, feel special, feel identified, feel connected to high school students. I like that there's some longevity to this. We have a lot of ninth graders involved right now, and so hopefully, we can match them with the same kid for years to come, make them a really bonded relationship. So that's the goal.
Okay, so who does it involve? Obviously, the high school students, who are the mentors to the elementary students. So what we had to do is, for over a two-day period, because we have a day-one and a day-two cycle, I went into every study hall throughout every period of the day and just explained what the program was to try to gain some interest. As it was, we ended up with 27 high school students, grades 9 through 12, who volunteered their services to participate in this program. Students, the high school students, do need to maintain academic eligibility. And basically, we hold them to the same standards that our athletes are held to, where they can't be failing two or more classes each week to be able to participate in the program. And then, as Sam mentioned, we held two different training sessions because of different grade levels, just to review the program again, review the expectations and procedures with signing in and out of each building and those kinds of things. So after the students were trained, they filled out an application, and then, they were matched with an elementary student.
Yeah, so we have... Right now, we have 17 elementary students participate. We're trying to recruit a few more to match with all of our high school friends. But some of our high school students have been very flexible and have said, "Hey, I'll just hop into a classroom and help in the classroom," which has been really fantastic as well. So for the elementary school, most of our referrals came through our swap process, or our team that's looking at students across different grade levels and saying, "Hey, this kid could use a little extra support. Hey, this kid needs some help with academics. Hey, this kid has some behavior concerns we want to work with." So we've kind of figured... Or attendance, or we've kind of figured out that referral process to do there. We've also had some parents request referrals and teachers request referrals to this program as well. Off to a great start. So how is this happening? So we are using the high school students' study hall periods. So they have volunteered their time. They will come over a minimum two days a week to work with their kids. Some of them have been so ambitious, they want to come over every day. And I tell them, "Please take one day to just do your study hall, catch up on whatever you need to do." So there's been quite a few that are over there Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. They want to be over there, which is really fantastic. And our kids, my kids really love that connection. They really look forward to having their mentors over there. And like we said before, they provide academic or social support during their meeting times. We are also going to be doing a structured mentoring activity at a minimum of one time per month. And that might be just board games, or it might be a craft, or it might be working in the garden, just something so that we can give the mentor and the mentee some designated time to kind of put academics aside for a minute, and let's just get to know each other and build up connectedness, which I really appreciate. We also have the additional option of high school students to volunteer in elementary classrooms. We've been using a lot of those guys in PE classes, which has been great. But a bunch of the kids that had originally signed up to do classroom support switched along to be mentors. So that was a nice change as well. Really, very helpful.
So when... We basically said this, that students, our high school students, go over and meet with the elementary students at various times throughout the day, but during their study halls or their free periods. And again, basically, two days a week minimum. But as Sam said, many students choose to go over more often than that because they're very excited about the program.
They were. It's very sweet. Even their applications were just fantastic to read because they really poured their heart into it, the high school kids. They're like, "I'd be a good mentor because..." All of these reasons that they want to connect. It was fantastic.
And there were even a couple of high school students that completely shocked me that they volunteered for a program like this. But it's really been good for them as well.
Oh, yeah.
Step up into that role model.
Which, exactly. Which brings us to the benefits. The benefits, like we said in the beginning, are vast. So we're looking at academics, your attendance, school connectedness for both the elementary students and the high school students. Just some statistics. Right now, we have nine ninth-grade mentors, five 10th-grade mentors, 10, 11th-grade mentors, and three 12th graders. A few may have moved in between when I got this here. But I think it's a fantastic opportunity for them to just kind of develop that school connectedness, look forward to coming to school, help improve their personal perception of who they are, what they stand for, what they want to do when they grow up, and for our kids to really look for that person when they're in the community, when they're at school events, when we do our senior walks or our home climb program, we're doing our school-wide events, to have that person be like, "Hey, I know you." You know? Like, that school connectedness piece is really big for them.
And some additional high school benefits for our high school students are they're able to use this as volunteer work. It looks good on their resume as they're applying to colleges or scholarships in the future. And then, also, they can kind of use this as career exploration, where they can start to determine what their strengths are, what their areas of interests are, what their skills are as they begin to refine their career pathway. So it's a great benefit for all.
It is. We had one senior who said, "I think I want to be a school counselor." And then, I put her in a kindergarten class, and she said, "I want to be a kindergarten teacher." So she's helping to kind of refine her area of expertise, I think. One is out. Any questions?
I just know that I've had the opportunity of walking back and forth between the buildings with kids coming back from the mentoring program. And they are excited. Those high school kids are excited for it.
Oh, I bet.
And it's just... It's nice to hear as I'm walking around. "Hey, tell me about yours." "Wow, we talked about this today. We did this today." So it's just pretty remarkable. It's pretty cool.
I think that's really popular overall. My sixth grader goes to the first-grade classroom.
Yes.
And he loves it. He looks forward to it every time. Enjoy it.
Yeah.
I know a lot of them love that program too.
Yeah, that's something else we're trying to kind of formalize too, is using our older kids in the building and helping them, having them help with other friends as well. They love it. They love it. Gives them such good confidence and power. It's a great option.
Now, in the peer-to-peer tutoring, have you found a lot of people that... It just seems like somebody that requests the tutor would be more into the tutoring session and have more success at the program. Have you found a lot of people requesting, "Can I get some extra help with... Is there a tutor available?" Or is there something to the effect? Have you seen a lot of that?
Yeah, I mean, probably more so this year than before. I think because there are gaps and the students are starting to realize that. But yeah, I think there's more buy-in when the student does that self-referral. Sometimes, when they don't self-refer and a teacher may make that recommendation, or I may pull the student and say, "Hey, what about a peer tutor?" They're like, "No, thank you." You know, they'd rather receive the help from a teacher or somebody like that. But so sometimes, I can convince them. Sometimes, I can't. They just, they don't want to accept that help from up here. They feel inadequate, or you know, it might be embarrassing to them. So yeah, sometimes, that buy-in piece is a struggle.
Any other board members have a question? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's exciting. Next, we have our first look at the budget with the state aid projections for the conference. Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, my bad. I'm sorry. It's just the STA report. Totally back. I was so excited about the budget. I love numbers.
My script too. So we'll be perfecting the budget. No worries. Okay. So I spent five of the STA, the Sydney Teachers Association, for the last month or so, with the exception of the negotiations team. We've been busy, busy, busy. We have met at the table with the district three times so far and have another meeting on the 14th. Yes, it's Valentine's Day, but everyone... And we're all married, and we don't care. But we're going to meet on Monday again. And we've been doing work sessions as an STA negotiations committee, you know, just a team, and are very, very hopeful that we'll be able to come up with an agreement very, very soon. We appreciate the recognition that you have actually given us regarding working through this pandemic. I mean, it has not been easy, as you can imagine. And I know you have recognized that verbally many times at this board meeting. So we do appreciate that as well. We are gearing up for our Share the Bounty, which is the free community dinner at the end of, toward the end of March. So we'll be gearing up for that. I'll tell you about that again in March. And on a separate note, that is a teacher note, but also not specifically union-related. Today, my co-partner, Carissa Kuchia, who teaches sixth grade with me, she and I worked, offered the students an opportunity for enrichment, which we try to do on a regular basis. And students take what they learned in class and try to expand upon it, learn a little bit more about things. So today was things like ancient Egypt, and we did things like layers of the earth and things like that. And we extended an invitation to Mr. Bullock, Mrs. Johnston, Mr. Hanson, and PJ Harmon to take pictures. And all three of them attended, came, encouraged the students. And it... Talk about culture, climate, and positivity. As a teacher, it feels great to have you come and recognize how great our students are. We're so proud of them. And we love it when they can come and be a part of it and see what they're doing. Because, you know, we're all busy, and it doesn't happen every day. We see it every day, and it was great. So we thank you for doing that and for supporting us in that way. Seems so silly and so simple, and it was maybe 20 minutes, but to us, it meant a lot. So as teachers, we appreciate all of that kind of support.
I want to speak here, isn't it?
Let's do the budget.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Dewey.
Very welcome.
I must say though, it was awesome working with Ms. Kuchia and Ms. Dewey's really pride, assembly, pride group and enrichment piece, right? I learned more about layers of the earth from these two young ladies. It was very remarkable. Not only that, but first of all, the way that these two spoke about their project, right? They didn't read off anything, right? It wasn't a script, right? They talked because they knew it. And they built this beautiful model, right? This 3D model that they earth, right? It was just quite remarkable. And I got to attend a couple of the sessions regarding jazz and why the kids are interested in the jazz piece. And so it was just, it was cool. It was cool. So thank you very much. Under the budget.
Under the budget. Again, now you have to follow that.
Thank you, Mrs. Dewey. No, this is actually quite positive, right? So state aid projections for next year. I think, you know, this is the first budget presentation for the budget process as we move forward. The end date is obviously May 17th that they're in the vote. Presentation will show state aid projections for next year. We show comparison from this year to next year. And the state aid runs will become finalized once the legislature and the governor vote on the budget by April 1st. So then, those numbers will be more concrete. So these are, again, projections, if you will. I think it's important, and I've done this ever since I started here in this role, but back in 2017, '18, the board participated, the district participated in the strategic planning efforts right to go through and really identify the vision of the district, the mission of the district. And then, what we did this summer is some prioritized areas. But I think it's always important to remember the district's vision and mission as we enter the budget process. And our decisions should reflect that strategic plan and the work that the board has done with this for the district. So again, I think it's important just to remember empowering all students to make meaningful, real contributions to their community and beyond. The next, taking a look at the focus areas The next, taking a look at the focus areas that the district worked on over the summer to lead the direction. As true of the vision and the mission, the district focus area should be the center of our decision-making process as we go through the budget process. So the district focus areas were developed in a manner to keep the same prioritized areas over multiple years with different goals to be able to build in there. Again, those prioritized areas are focused on student supports. This Mrs. Dewey had just mentioned, right? The culture, climate, positivity hashtag word, right, to Miss Burris, and Miss Gravlin has also mentioned. Our commitment to professional learning communities and working at collaborative teams, and our community partnerships and enrichment. Again, I'd just like to thank Cindy MS, Cindy Fire here, to recognize, because of her efforts there, too, is an example of our community partnerships. Not some dollars and cents. What do they mean? So on the left-hand side, you'll see the 21, 22, the current state aid runs by category, and then you'll see the executive proposal. Again, these are projections. We won't have concrete numbers until after the April 1. A couple of things to point out is the foundation aid. You'll see comparatively, right, the projection puts us at 13.8 million. That is because of the New York State being committed to fully funding foundation aid. If you remember, it's a three-year process that started last year. Sydney Central School District was funded at 83% of foundation aid for a number of years. We were actually flat for a number of years. If you remember, two years in a row, it was like 11,500, 11,500, right? Last year was the first year of it being fully funded, the three-year phase-in, so last year we had an increase of 700,000 in foundation aid. Right, it's projected that we'll receive an increase of 1.3 million for next year. This is just foundation aid. And in the third year of implementation, which will conclude a 23, 24 school year, which will be roughly between 300,000, 400,000, what's left of the fully funded formula. Again, Sydney Central School District was funded at 83% of what the district should have been receiving for years. Why? I don't know, right? That's just the way that, that's just the way the cookie crumbled.
But 300,000 to 400,000 will be a number increase?
It'll be a dollar increase for next year.
Like 300,000 to 400,000?
Yep, yep.
So that would go up to the 13,000 you were talking about?
Correct.
Yep.
And that would be the fully funded amount. And then where does it go from there? I'm not sure, but that's, that's New York State's commitment to fully funding districts that were not at the 100% foundation aid formula, right? Which, this is, this is great for Sydney Central School District, right? It's been that way for a long time. And remember, Sydney Central School District is very dependent on state aid, right? I mean, we are 72% funded on state aid, so we are, we are extremely dependent on, on this. So just to kind of point out a couple of things, right? Foundation aid is really based on student enrollment and the combined wealth ratio of the district, right? And take a look at our student enrollment, our student enrollment's not bad, right, considering rural upstate New York. And just to kind of give you a comparison, there was a data point that was put together from DCM of BOSI's that compared all of the school districts in DCM of BOSI's from 2009 until last year, so it was 11-year trend, just call it a decade, right, for lack of better words. And the average decrease in student enrollment by district was almost 29%. There was the most, right, was 40% decline, a neighboring school of ours, and we had declined only 15%. We were the lowest by far out of all the DCM of BOSI's with regards to enrollment trends. Our enrollment this year, district-wide, is 1187. The lowest that we've seen is 1087, and we're back at 1187. So it's actually quite remarkable that we have stayed and have not increased the last couple of years with our enrollment. Sometimes people ask, like, why is your enrollment going up and other districts aren't going up? I think there's a lot of different reasons. I think there's industry here, I think there's housing here. I'm kind of biased, it's a good school district. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of good things, right? So, you know, that's, those are some of the responses they've said. So if you take a look at foundation aid, so you'll see that increase by 1.3 million. That's, that's the jump in that, that is, that is the increase. You'll see the BOSI's aid last year, or I'm sorry, current year being 2.2 million, going up to 2.5. If you remember, BOSI's aid is a year out, right? So we would get BOSI's aid from last year for this year, right? So if you go back, why was it 2.2? We didn't run a summer program because of COVID, right? In the summer program, if you look at the aid that comes in for the summer program, it's about 300,000, right? So going back up to that 2.5 million is more consistent with our BOSI's return or our BOSI's aid because of the reimbursability of what services we run through there. So that, that's why there was a drop in that. It's not an increase of that, it's just back up to where we, where we were. High tax aid, that doesn't change. Hardware and software, those are small, but you spend, or you get back what you spend, right? So we, we, Mike does a really nice job with us in driving this aid, is that you can only spend up to 21,966 in hardware technology, but he will spend all of that because you get it all back, right? So if you don't spend that, then that number can actually decrease. So you want to make sure that you maximize those aid lines. For a subtotal of 16.3 million, right? Then transportation aid, we typically are right around the 1.2 mark. And then our building aid is 2.6 million. Other aid, if you will, that's broken up to our UPK and our high-cost excess aid. So for a total overall state aid package of $20,746,282. And if you look at the increase of what we got current year, right, it's about 1.6 million, that's 1.3 in foundation aid, and 300,000 for your BOSI's aid, right? And again, for next year, again, I think it's important to point out the third year of foundation aid being fully funded. I don't know that exact number, but it'd be somewhere between that 3 and 400,000, depends on what's, what's left for us out of that three-year implementation. So you'll see that. And the foundation aid is stable, right? This isn't typically one thing that they go through and cut unless there's some sort of catastrophic, right, type of deal, but that is, that is a, a stable funding line, if you will, with regards to state aid. So that is a great thing for us. Again, not all districts in the same boat, so we want to be somewhat delicate when we talk about state aid and, or the, the foundation aid. Districts that have seen a decrease in enrollment, perhaps that maybe are a little bit wealthier, right, aren't catching anywhere near what, what they are. And some districts have been fully funded, right, at 100%. So just, this is great news for Sydney Central School District, for sure.
Is that percentage based on the wealth of the district?
Enroll, so foundation aid, right, is based on student enrollment and your combined wealth ratio?
When we get, when we were 83%, instead of some of the other districts that are 100%? How has that percentage been determined?
The same, well, how, why a district could be 100% versus why we are at 3%? I have no idea. It would have something to do with your enrollment and your combined wealth ratio. Yep, yep. But as far as the, the formula that goes along with that, I have, I have no idea.
Haven't had a chance to know that.
Well, they, I mean, they've talked about the foundation aid formula being wrong for decades, right, I mean, for a long time, so I, I don't know.
We were on the legislative breakfast Saturday morning, the BOSI's is probably part of your report, but they were, one of the action items was talking about the foundation aid, and so even I were just like, we're not saying anything because we're getting funded, but it's an issue. A lot of schools are still, still dealing with this.
Yeah. And can you just, on the building and other, UPK, why are those two categories, why are you projecting that they're going to go down? The building aid went down 150K and the other category went down about 50K?
Yeah, it was the high-cost excess aid was adjusted. Your UPK money doesn't change. UPK money stays the same, it's 84,000, it's been 84,000 since 2002, something like that, that hasn't changed. Why the, why the difference in high-cost excess aid? I don't know much about that.
Okay, I was, I was afraid that UPK money was going down.
No, there's actually, for districts that don't have a current UPK program, there is actually additional funding to start certain programs, so it'd be a three-year program or, you know, UPK program. But if you already currently have one, there's no, there's no change to that. So, no, ours has, ours has been the same ever since UPK grant money started, and again, don't quote me on what year it was, 2002, 2004, or something like that, at 83,790.
And again, is the building aid similar to the hardware technology where what you spend, you get back?
Building aid is all driven on your debt service, right? What your, yeah, what your, picture like your mortgage payment is your debt service, right? So this is my mortgage payment, this is what I got coming in. So that's why it's important to always keep going with capital projects, right? You want to drive some debt, right, so that you keep your debt here, so that your building aid stays here. So Mike has done a brilliant job orchestrating almost a flat one-for-one building aid debt service issue. If you remember a few years ago, so it was important to get the project, the one that we just did, to get it closed out, is to drive some building aid. Not that it was a substantial debt service cliff, but it's where your mortgage payment, right, is a little bit more than what your income is, right? So we want to make sure that you, that you drive your debt box, right, so that you can get more aid coming in for your building aid. That's why it's important to do capital projects, and that's why you want to right-size capital projects to make sure that you can right-size that ratio. And Mike has done a brilliant job working with fiscal advisors that really, fiscal advisors oversee municipalities, right, to really, what you can do, what you can't do, and he works hand-in-hand with them on a regular basis. And there's been lots of conversations about the upcoming capital projects and like, what we can do, what that, what that really, what they call sweet spot, right? What do you want to borrow versus what you can afford to, so he's done a really nice job with, with balancing that stuff.
Quick point to what you're discussing with the building aid. That number's probably about 80,000 shy of what we will get because we just did a capital outlay. If you recall, we didn't do a capital outlay project last year for some concerns with COVID, et cetera. We just closed that out, but we're in the process of closing that out. So when you do the state aid snapshot somewhere in August, September, that'll get picked up, and we expect that number to close that gap that you mentioned, because that's one of the first questions I had, and I knew that would be caught in the back of my mind. The other is that you had a bill, had a different formulas, so you had a private project somewhere '04, '06, that they kicked some state aid down the road. So that's finally coming off, so that makes out the difference between the two. So it's not going to be as dramatic as what we thought, and there's some advantages for the way that's structured right now.
And that's great, because that was like here, that it was a COVID-related, that, you know, there was going to be a temporary hit or something, so that's great to hear.
Yeah, it shouldn't be. Thanks, Mike. Yeah, that capital outlay, if you remember, is pool cover. And capital outlay projects are eligible at what rate?
You can do 100K every year. Our building aid project, or pardon me, our building aid right now is phenomenal, it's like 94%. It's gone off the last 30, 40, 60% or so.
So one of the weekly updates, if you remember, I think I put in there the actual cost of what it was to the district with regards to the pool cover. I can't remember what it was, $9,000 or something like that over the course of the year, two years or whatever, I can't remember, but, because the ability to that and the cost savings, things like that, so. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
And then just the last comparison, and then to drive a little bit of discussion at the board, is when you look at the state aid, right, the number it just carries over the 20, 20,746,282. The local tax share, so currently, the tax, the tax levy collected is 1 point, or I'm sorry, 6.3 million. The anticipated tax levy is 2%, right? So 2% for Sydney Central School District generates 122,618. So the above number, that 6.2, 6.2 million is with the 122 factored in, if the district decides to go with the 2% tax levy increase. Again, I put that number in there, you know, you divide that by, divide that by, cut it in half, right, what you see 1% will generate, right, for, for the district, right? It's not a lot of money when you're talking about raising 1%, 2%, things like that. It really is not in a, you know, 28 million dollar budget. Appropriated fund balance and debt service, again, we're just putting in the number right now of 800,000. In the past, we've done 1.4 million, and that really depends on the fluid balance of our current fund balance, right? What, what we do throughout the year and what we want to appropriate. So we put a place value in there, about 800,000, what we think is appropriate right now. Miscellaneous revenue, again, this is just a projection, miscellaneous revenue, this could be things from tuition from students, this could be their, this is the rental of Masonville Building, which is about 110,000 in agreement annually. So this is your miscellaneous revenue items, right? Things that don't fall under state aid or your taxes that fall into there. Historically, it's been around a million, give or take a little bit, so we just put the place value in there. For a total revenue comparison, you'll see is, current year is 27,712,970. And if you look at the increase in that, it's about a million dollars, but again, remember, we're 1.3 increase in foundation aid, 300,000 a month back up in your transportation aid. So again, a projected revenue of 28,799,817. So really, the question I would come back to the board is conversations around the tax levy increase. And, you know, as you know, the reserves, the reserves are well-funded. We had talked about developing, having a referendum in, in May for another capital reserve, very similar to what we did back in 2019, creating a capital reserve, a referendum for a $10 million maximum, as opposed to a million. So our, our fund balance is, is strong, our reserves are strong. I think with what we've done this year, being conservative this year, I think we will have a surplus at the end of this year as well, too, as like what we did last year. So it really comes back to a conversation of, you know, you never really want to leave money on the table, but, right, Sydney Central School District is in, is in a good financial spot. So that really comes back to a discussion at board, what direction, where you want to go, what you want to do.
Do we know how the assessments are going in the village? Have they gone down, been down or not?
That's a great question, so.
Have you reached the bottom yet?
It's got to be close.
We've been talking about this for like 10 years.
Yeah, we've been talking about, hopefully not for, as long as I've been, well, 10 years, right, at least. There hasn't been, there hasn't been anywhere near the talk that I've heard in the last two years, like what you heard eight years ago, and you, you just haven't heard it. So I, I can't, I can't guarantee anyone that, but there has not been any discussion of like what there was years past. So I would imagine, you know, if I, if I'm going to guess, right, I would say that it's probably about where it's going to be at.
Keep waiting for that clip, right?
Well, right, but I mean, that way it's easier to predict how much of the true tax increase you're going to, if you knew.
Correct. Correct, and what the previous. Because if you remember correctly, this is, I'm going to go back, actually, I believe it was my first year, and we did a 0% tax, oh, I'm sorry, we did a 0.5% increase, right? And I, I had a resident come up and say, well, my school tax went up 10%. You raise taxes 10%. And I said, how about we hit me for coffee and I'll explain to you that we didn't raise taxes 10%? But there's, the money that still has to be collected has to come from somewhere. We didn't increase that, right? And once I had that conversation, but that was a perception. Yeah, I, yep.
If I may, you can, you think about it as terms of free parts, to your point, Mr. Rines. You look at a tax levy, you're constructing a budget to maintain programs and expand programs for what you have. The other two variables that we always talk about in August and September are to the assessments as well as the property loss. It's a unique situation to Sydney and all this corridor with the flooding. You know, we hear qualitative rhetoric about people calling up, having my home bought back, et cetera, but there's been nothing quantifiable throughout. That rhetoric has kind of died down, so to the point, you think it has baseline, but we literally won't know those tax rolls until they come out in July and August. And that's why I'm always kind of hesitant to kind of marry the two points. The point's well-taken, but if you have a frame of mind, you know, we're in the, we're all in the best interest of a public school, and can the budget support the program that we have today and possibly expand it? I would say yes. You also have to be cognizant, and this is where even I had a conversation with Robert, just to get a positive perspective of their, of districts across the state and what they're doing from a similar perspective. You have to be cognizant of that property loss and what that impact is upon the taxpayer, which, you know, there's a lot of nights I kind of lay awake, wonder what the right thing to do is, and that's why we posed the question.
I wonder if the hot real estate market will drive assessments up instead of the trend of moves and, you know.
At some point, I wonder if, you know, a hot real estate market will help to at least stabilize it. Yeah, I would think so, yep, yep.
And we don't, we don't have to make a decision. I mean, we still have the expense side to go through. I mean, I think it would be great to have zero again and give that back to the taxpayers that we've done before, but definitely, I mean, it's definitely worth a conversation about what that means on the road.
Yeah, and if you remember, we actually, we went up to the taxpayers at 1.23%, right, in the last vote, right, in last May, and then we made the decision to not increase the tax levy at all. And did it really impact any type of votes? I don't, we only had 12 votes total, or 12 no-votes total on the whole thing, 123 yes votes. So, I mean, I don't think the 1.3 was the decision that you're, right? It really comes back to, I think, at this level, what, you know, what do we want to do? Something that, that Mike and I have talked about is, you know, there, there is increase in federal funds, right? We are not mixing federal funds with general fund budget, right? These are two separate pieces, right? We are not supplanting anything we're doing in the general fund with federal monies, which is important. You want to make sure you don't do that, right? You've got to make sure long-term sustainability of those things. So if there's any type of recommendation, right, I know Mike and I have talked about that, that federal funds are good for another two years, right? We know foundation aid, right, will increase this year, I'm, next year, right, 22, 23 school year, and we know that it's going to increase another 300, 400,000, and again, we don't know the number, just go conservatively 300,000, in the 23, 24 school year. Remember, if that increases 300,000, 1%, right, if we want to increase taxes 1%, I don't mean to chuckle at that, but it's only 62,000, right? So if we're going to increase in foundation aid, now what will happen post 23, 24? Then we might want to take a look at it, right? We may want to, and again, I'm not saying go 0% next two years, that's not 4%, right? But the logic behind this is we are in good financial shape right now, right? Does it make sense, right, to do something to go 0% this year? Look at it again, just like what we're going to do now, right? And then see where foundation aid may go from there. So for the next two years, we know that we're going to have that type of, that type of revenue stream, if you will. Just something to think about as we go. We don't have to make a decision made by any means, as Gary's what you're talking about, but at least to get things on the table, like where do you want to go, what do you want to do? Because we're not just thinking about now, right? We're thinking about, you know, when we don't raise taxes, right, you're leaving money on the table in that compound effect two, three, four years down the road. So just trying to think about, trying to think about those variables now in February. Again, we don't need to make a decision, but just want to make sure that we have an eye on it, we're transparent in what you want to do, and that you have the information that we are in good financial shape, and we should be for the next couple of years, for sure.
Well, but that's also the thing that you talked about, the compound effect. 2% is the max, you know, really that you're going to do in a, in an increase, and if, if you lose the 1 to over 2% for a number of years, and then all of a sudden, we are no longer in as strong a financial position as we are, which we hope we stay where we are, but it's hard to catch up.
Sure.
You know, you're chasing that for a couple of years after that.
If I may, that's the point that's well-taken, that you always have in the back of your mind, and then you come and you think about it. So 2% represents about 122,000 out of a 28 million dollar budget, so you're looking at a half a percentage point, right? You come back to a district such as this, you're never going to tax your way out of a, a difficult situation. So it comes down to proper play, the point I made about can your tax levy, the way it is currently, support the academic programming as is, as well as expand? And I think the third point moving forward is, you know, once again, we're 72% state aid district. You put that in perspective, we're perpetually subsidized by the state, which is a good thing in this case.
Any other questions, sir? Discussion or comment? Good, thank you. Good breakdown inside the seat. Looking positive.
Yeah, yeah. It's just interesting, when you flash back, but if you remember a year and a half, we were talking about 20% cuts.
Oh, yeah.
Right? And look where we're at right now, it's just, just interesting, right?
Well, and I would say that is, like, you know, the 100 grand is, is a very small percent of the budget, but it could be a program, or it could be a staff member.
Sure.
You know, I mean, it could be the difference, you know, in, in one position or, or, you know, one program.
You know, I'll, I'll give an, I'll give an example, right? Just a high-level example, but it, we run a, we run about a half a million dollar enrichment program, right? It is 90% eligible, right, through BOSI's, right? So we get back 450,000 out of that 500,000. There, it's a 50,000 dollar program, right? 1% is 62,000, right? So does Dewey, and again, that is a big summer program all summer, right? It's the after-school program, right? It's a great community, it's a great community need, if you will, but is that something to think about, too? Is it, you know, we raised taxes 1%, right, to be able to offset the cost of the enrichment fees? Now, we build it right into the, to the budget, so it's not that big a deal, but it's something to at least think about when you're looking at, is it a position, or is it a program, or is it something like that? And again, just things to think about. Before you go on, I have a, just for super gen update, some of the things, if that's all right?
Yeah.
Okay. If there's no other questions, invite your guests. In April, I'm sorry, in March, you'll get a comparison, it'll be the expense, right, to the revenue. Again, the revenue will still be projection, but you can get that just like we did last year. Or just really quick, I'd like to thank Mrs. Burrows and Ms. Gravlin, Mr. Hanson, Ms. McCarren, Ms. Rogan for putting together the two programs that were presented here tonight. And I think, you know, maybe you had mentioned about the power of the human connection, right? Whether the adult or a child with another child, right, a student with a smaller student. And the mentoring program having such a benefit for both the mentor and the mentee. And I just appreciate the work that they've done on this initiative, getting that up and going, having the interest it is. Also, it's National School Counselor Week, so again, I'd like to thank Ms. Burrows and Ms. Gravlin, Ms. Nicoletti, Mrs. Nortonhold, Ms. Smith, Ms. Gray for what they do at Sydney Central School District, so thank them and appreciate their work. Is, Kerry had mentioned the legislative breakfast took place this past Saturday, February 5th. Our very own board president, Kerry Green, was a featured speaker at the event, so I'm super proud of what you talked about and I did, I heard her partner Shane Butler who spoke. There were three main topics discussed. Reduced restrictions, earning limits for retiring, for retirees filling vacant positions. So right now retirees can only make $35,000. So once they make that, they can't work, right, from a January 1st to a December 31st. So that was one point. The second point was foundation aid. Again, we had already spoken about that. The third one that they talked about was increase the BOC CTE eligible salary limit. And just really quick, what that is, is they're advocating for a change in the amount that districts can receive aid back on a person's salary. So right now, districts can only receive aid back at $35,000 of a BOCs employee, right? So they're looking at changing that limit, advocating for genuine limits, so it can drive more aid for districts, right? And that's, it's fairly substantial, is just to kind of give a rough idea if an employee costs with benefits, a benefits package, the city costs $80,000, I'm just making up the number, right? $80,000, you only drive aid on that first $35,000, right, and then the district gets the rest, right? So they're talking about increasing that limit, and it is fairly substantial, right? So you take $35,000, right, and you drive aid on it, it's about $21,000 you get back in aid, where if they increased that to an $80,000 employee with full payments and benefits package, you drive $56,000 back in aid, right? It's substantial, so it's about a $35,000 difference. So that's why they're really advocating for an increase in CTE eligibility for those positions. There were three other topics included on the Shenango County School Board Association Position Statement, but not really addressed by the legislators. Those topics were fewer restrictions on the federal funding, the COVID relief, so we're talking about the CARES money, the ESSR money, the YAR money. Increasing the capital outlay limit, project from 100,000 to 250,000. I feel like they've talked about that now for, what, three, four years? Just hasn't been any movement with that, but to really be able to accomplish much in 100,000, it's not, you can't really do much in 100,000. Mike did a brilliant job with the pool cover, right, thinking about what we could do with that, but they're looking at proposing that to 250,000. And the last piece was rural economic growth revitalization and funding high-speed rural broadband. And I heard Mr. Miller's going to bring high-speed rural broadband to all rural areas, so at least that's what we threw out.
I love the plug.
Yep. So anyways, there was, there was about 37 people on the call, 13 superintendents, regional, regional board members and things like that, so. The next piece is, I just saw the message out, so you've probably got it with your text alert, right? We have about 3,000 COVID tests, right, Mr. Sten, about 3,000?
3,000.
This is occupying his room and his closet and all that good stuff. So we, we're going to do another test kit distribution, it'll take place tomorrow from 11 to 1:00, and then again, next week on Thursday, from 11 to 1:00 on the 17th, and it's just going to be drive-through, drive-through, you know, the front parking lot here. So Mr. Sten's going to head that up.
Just don't sneeze in your office or they'll be coming down.
So try to, try to get them out as best you can. You know, families ask, we do a really good job. The message tonight said, too, if you can't make one of the drive-throughs, just, you know, contact school, we'll send them in. Parents have been really great with that. Just a couple of things regarding the development of the upcoming capital project I want to share. I know I've shared a few things in the weekly update, just kind of the progression to those, but I just wanted to summarize up really four main areas with this. So currently, we're working at Highland. Highland's architects, we have worked with with our building condition survey, seem to be really good, with an exterior spatial study with outdoor learning spaces, athletic field utilization, including feasibility of replacing, reconstructing the tennis courts, either in the present location or being able to be relocated on campus. Looking at overall campus flow, not only with help with the project, but with future capital projects down the road as well, too. We know the tennis courts are not playable, right? There's massive cracks in them. They, there's one court, I think, that you could probably play on, other ones that are just not playable, right? So we have to do something with that, we know that. Currently working with Highland and CNS company. CNS is our construction management firm out of Syracuse that helped run this last project, a top-notch group. To finalize project scopes, well, both firms will provide estimates, providing pre-referendum budget for board approval, so you'll have that. In an ideal world, I'd love to have to you two weeks prior to the March board meeting. Again, I hate putting timelines on things, but I also want to put timelines on things. Is two weeks prior to the board meeting in March, love to have scope, project scope and kind of rough numbers of what we're looking at. And then at the March board meeting, we would have Dave Dagen and Drew Marsinovich, who is the lead architect, that would present here at our March 15th board meeting on where we're at with that. So you can see some schematics and things like that in the scope to work. Mike has done a brilliant job with this, too, working with fiscal advisors that I had mentioned earlier, on receipt of the pre-referendum budget from Highland and CNS to determine capital projects on state aidability. Said, Mike, we're about like 94% aidability on capital projects, so now's the time to do it as well, too. And then having been, working with fiscal advisors as well to establish financial models, financial models as in, you know, are we going to look at this $5 million project with a $1 million local out of the capital reserve that we created? Is it a 6 million, is it a $1 million local share for us right out of the capital reserve? Really, all of which will have no additional tax impact, right? I mean, that's, that's really talking through like balancing that building aid with a debt service, right? Where's that sweet spot for the district long-term wise? Just as, that kind of summarized, that piece is up there and kind of what you can expect moving forward. The district's CRISA, this is the COVID Response and Relief Supplemental Act. Project has been submitted to SED. This is a project, as I've mentioned, this is a while ago, but I mentioned, that involves the alignment of our district's automated controls for heating, cooling, and really all things automation and air conditioning in the upstairs of the junior, senior high school. That's the, that's the CRISA fund that has been submitted. And then just one last note is Sydney Central School District, along with some schools in the Broome Taga BOCs and one other DCMO BOCs, has partnered with Broome Taga BOCs and SUNY Broome to offer four additional dual enrollment courses. The course of the four courses are financial accounting, introduction to engineering, technology, environmental science, and statistics. We already offer statistics through SUNY Broome through our fast forward program, but some districts didn't. Courses are free and are being offered asynchronously. So Sydney students are currently enrolled, ready to begin in February 28th, and this opportunity for schools is being possible through the advanced course access grant program through BT BOCs. So neat opportunity for our kids that we are exploring, so thank you, Mrs. Johnson for working with us, Ms. McCarren, Ms. Rogan, and Ms. Gravlin for helping enroll our kids with this opportunity. So. And then, as I mentioned this a couple of different times, is hopefully in the May referendum, you'll see very similar to what was on in May 2019 with regards to capital reserve, except this capital reserve will set as a max limit, is $10 million to be able to fund to over the course of 10 years as opposed to 1 million. So we'll likely use that 1 million dollar capital reserve with the upcoming capital budget, so. And that's all I have for today.
Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the minutes from the regular board of education meeting held on January 11, 2022. Some. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the personnel consent agenda as presented.
Some. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Resolve, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Some. Second.
No, I did personally. Your friend, come on. Oh, sorry. I'll, I'll listen. Yeah. Opposed? Any abstentions? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the non-resident tuition rates for the 2022, 2023 school year as presented.
Some. Second.
Any discussion?
I'm not clear on that. So it went up for elementary school, but went down?
It did.
Yes.
It did.
Substantially.
Substantially. And I included in that update that we, we reached out in why we actually had a fair amount of discussion about this. So can you provide a reason why COVID impact? I think there was nothing more.
That's why one would increase and the other would decrease.
I have no idea.
Why is the impact different? So one, four versus the other?
Somebody brought up one more. I have no idea.
Okay, fine. Sounds good.
We actually, we actually double-checked and triple-checked this. Pulled the, pulled the report again the next day, there was an estimated one initially that I had sent out that we got. COVID impact.
Any others? That's good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry? So we have board member comments. I have two things, actually. So one, I received a phone call from our Area 8 representative, Ryan Lotrek, last week. Just wanted to check in about how things are doing in Sydney. I, last year I served on the revolutions committee for NISBA, so he asked if I wanted to do that again, and I said sure. But he did mention that there are other committees available, and if any of you have an interest in being a part of the NISBA committee, there's lots of different policy and marketing, you know, public relations, community relations, all that. If you really want to be on the revolutions committee, I'd be happy to change committees if you really, if that interests you. But just let me know if there's something that you would like to do on a NISBA level to represent our area. They have some committees available. And then we also had an alumni meeting, so I serve as the ref on the alumni committee on behalf of the school board. So alumni weekend is going to be, I believe it's the weekend of July 15th, 15, 16, 17, yeah.
The non-alumnus.
The non. Hey, I grew up here. I live alone. Her, the alumni.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah. That's right. You are. You serve on the school. It's fine, your kids come here, you live here. Anyway, it's the weekend of the 15th. There may be, it's possible they might do march of classes downtown instead of up at the school. They're still figuring that out. They want to make it a little bit more all-inclusive, include the downtown area. I think they're doing the breakfast out of the community center again, so.
They did talk about the march. I think Dennis Porter talked about maybe the march to the center of town.
Right. Right. But they still, you know, will plan to put in the use for fields and planning on bringing back all those sports that they've done traditionally, so I'll update you more on that as we get closer. But you're all invited to attend, obviously, as the ones. Any other board member comments?
So I'll do a little for the Sydney Drama Club this weekend, doing their performance of Peter Pan. So if anybody's looking for something to do, they'll be performing Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so.
I think seven to seven. Seven o'clock on Friday, Saturday, and two o'clock on Sunday, and they bumped that up a little bit so that it doesn't conflict with the Super Bowl.
Right, of course, right.
Not that you want to compete with Super Bowl, but.
And I just wanted to say that, you know, I know administration's taken a much larger role in varsity sports and showing up again, and it's been wonderful. You guys have done a great job, a lot of participation. It's definitely, it's much more enjoyable experience, and I want to thank you guys for your efforts and giving that attention.